Here. This is, it is June 18th, 2024. This is our seven o'clock board meeting. We're going to begin by indicating who's here. Kim?
Kim Chandler.
Karen Wender.
Clark Nelson.
Todd Auber.
Rich Nye.
Julie, can you indicate?
Julie Jackson.
And Nicole McDermott. All right, welcome. We'd like to first acknowledge any visitors that we have from our PTA. Do we have any PTA visitors today?
She asked me excuses.
Okay, thank you. GEA? Michelle?
Michelle Jones, GEA president.
And you're here all by yourself. It's summer.
It's summer.
Summer recovery. GAEOP? Any from there? Gespa?
Emrezi, I'm the president.
Thanks, Emrezi, for being here. Middle Managers? And Granite Education Foundation? Have any of those? Okay. All right, welcome. We're going to go ahead. And John Welborn is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our reverence. And I ask Connie Burgess to share with us some thoughts.
So Martin Luther King said that intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. Theodore Roosevelt said, "To educate a person in the mind but not in morals is to educate a menace to society." So I just wanted to mention and how glad I am that we have in our goals that it is, the academics is our bullet point. But surrounding that, how important it is that we have character-building skills so that our students can become well-rounded and well-prepared for life in the future. Thanks.
Thanks, Connie. We're going to go ahead and move on to our Good News Minute. Julie, if you are ready, we'll go ahead and start with you since you're online. Julie, are you?
Can you give me just a minute? I'll be right back, so give me a minute.
Okay, we're going to go ahead. We'll go ahead and start with Clark and come back to you. Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Clark, go ahead.
Sure, I just wanted to celebrate a couple of kind of growth goals that were achieved at Bonneville Junior High School and Cottonwood High School. There may have been some wagers that had to be paid from principals involved in that that were quite entertaining. But most of all, I think it's appropriate to celebrate the great graduations that we had just a few weeks ago. I had the chance to attend three of our high school graduations, and each one of them was tremendous. So I add my congratulations again to all of the graduates. And we just wanted to let all of you know all of the feedback, the positive and great feedback that I received from so many patrons about what great graduation events were held. Thank you.
Thanks, go ahead, Charlie.
I echo Clark. I was able to go to some graduations, and they're always the biggest celebration. That's why we're here. We want to help kids earn their diploma and venture out on the next step of their life. And so those are, those are great. I think Granger had the largest graduating class. It was Tyler Howes, 700 and how many? Six?
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty. And let me tell you, it took an hour and a half to parade seven twenty across the stage. But equally important for each and every individual kid to be able to make that walk. So very happy about that. Also, speaking of kind of moving on next steps, I was able to go to the CTE Open House. This is the program where kids that are interested in construction come, and we have money, and they buy, we buy a lot, and they literally work with mentors to build a house. And then we put it on the market, we sell it, and then the money from that goes to build the next lot. And so our construction kiddos can have hands-on experience doing that. And it was phenomenal to walk through. The two were side by side that I visited out in West Valley, West, West Valley. And it was just, it was fantastic to be able to see the work that those, that those kids did and to talk to their teachers and how excited they are to provide very valuable skills, whether or not they go into that as their career or not, but just overall valuable skills.
Thanks, Karen.
So I also went to the homes. They are very nice, and they're Rambler's, so it's really nice. I think those that purchase them get a good home. I also went to the CEO program that Granite has in the CTE programs where students create a business, and they study business all year long. Different people come in and talk to them. And then their final project is they have to sell their goods. And this took place at Trolley Square. There are probably 12, maybe, young people, nine to 12 young people that brought their ideas and tried to sell them. So I, it was very interesting in what they bought, but what an opportunity for these seniors to have, you know, to create a business that will help them as they grow and just get better in life. So it was a good program.
Thanks, Connie. Kim?
Just want to recognize two things out of the several that have happened this last month. One being Wright Elementary STEM Assembly. For anyone who's listening who was there, you'll know what I mean when I say the Dancing Rabbit was the absolute hit with all the kids. The best part for them, the adults laugh at different jokes than the kids do. But really good time for, for the students there. I think that was a great opportunity for them in celebrating their new STEM designation. Also, got to attend the closing flag ceremony at Western Hills on the last day of school. And just wanted to recognize the principal there, Wendy, for the wonderful job that I think she did with that ceremony. There was a lot of emotions from the kids and the teachers there, from the community there. But I think that she did a great job in leading that. And at the same time, dealing with what's a difficult situation for them. You know, spent time teaching the kids about the flag and about how to properly respect it and that kind of thing. So she added in some great little tidbits as well as just doing a good job in helping them through that, that final flag ceremony for their school. So I wanted to recognize that. That's all. Thanks, Kim.
Julie, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am. I had a big, great opportunity this, in the end of May to go to the super reunion for Skyline. And I just cannot believe what amazing things have happened in that building over the last, what would it be, 80 years since that building has been there? And the people who were there, the stories they were sharing, the scrapbooks that they were, we were looking at, the uniforms, the articles in the newspaper. It's just so clear that public education has had such an impact over the last 80 years just in this one school, you could see the impact that it has had on our community. And I thank so much to Amy Burke and all of her committee who put that Skyline Super Reunion together. And I also just wanted to take them and thank all of our staff. I mean, the people who are working on getting Skyline moved into their new building are working really hard. Our teachers and the people who work at Skyline who packed everything up. And now the people who are trying to figure out how to get that hall moved in. I mean, we just really appreciate all of that effort and cannot wait for it to all be in place so we can have our new, smooth running school. It's very, very exciting.
Thanks, Julie. For my part, I just wanted to share two things. I, as a bookend to graduation, I was able to go with Kim to the Connections, our Granite Connections, which is our adult high school. And there's a whole slew of graduates that attend there. If anybody's never been there or to see that, any that maybe were early graduates or some from a different district, to, all the way to some people who just, for whatever reason, didn't graduate with their class, you know, many years ago. And it was, I loved hearing the sincere thanks that they gave us as they came and shook our hands and said, "Thank you so much for educating us. Thank you so much for doing this." It was an amazing experience to be able to be there. The other thing was I got to go to the West Fest Parade. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the Hunter and Granger SBOs. They were amazing to, they, they got there, they were there to represent their schools, but also to represent our district. And they got together and they chatted and they found out about each other and they, they, you know, cheered each other on. And at the end of the parade, they're by Granger, by Hunter, just really awesome kids. And so just wanted to tell them that. And, and our Kennedy nights also were there. But just how well they worked together, and I really appreciate that because at the end of the day, we're all Granite and we're all here for the same purpose. So I love that. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on. I am going to backtrack just a little bit. Wanted to recognize Representative McPherson, who I see in the back here. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you and all you do for us. We're going to go ahead and go on to recognitions. Turn the time over to Ben.
We have a lot of recognitions tonight. I'm not going to introduce them all. I'd like to first invite Dwight Liddard and Donna and Judith to join us up front here. Shawna, why don't you join them as well to recognize, to do our first recognition? And as soon as they're complete, we'll just go down the list. And Sherry Sorensen will be leading each of those specific recognitions.
I'm going to start first. My name's Judith Kissel, and I have been involved with UAESP, which is the Principals' Union, probably since many of you weren't even born, since 1995. So very long time. I'm retired. I'm still involved. I'm over the Committee of the National Distinguished Principal, which Granite was able to have a winner last year. Very exciting. And I just want to say that going to the conferences in Park City, going to the conferences in St. George is professional development for principals. It's networking, it's stealing ideas from people, because if you think we make them up, we don't. We beg, borrow, and steal them. And I'm hoping that we get lots and lots more ground in involvement. But we're here to celebrate someone who's a winner today. And I have Dave and Donna Harris here.
Hi, I'm Donna Harris. I used to be a principal in Granite. I'm also retired and still involved with UAESP as well. And this is Dave Pendergast, and he is the upcoming UAESP president for next year, Utah Association of Elementary School Principals. And Granite has a Granite Association of Elementary School Principals, of which I also was president of when I was a principal. So involved a lot and still involved as retired. And I do the seven awards that are given up in Park City. Well, not really Park City, but that way. And those awards are Community Leader, Innovator of the Year, Instructional Leader of the Year, Rookie of the Year, Rural Principal of the Year, Student Advocate of the Year, and then they also do a special contributor to UAESP. And all different principals from districts around Utah send in applicants. And then I have a committee that reads through these. And this year, Granite District, that's why I'm here. Granite District had a winner for Innovator of the Year, Jennifer Bodell. Very good. So Jennifer is a principal of Whittier Elementary. Jennifer has, these are some of the things that she did. She had each of her kindergarteners sign a letter of intent and gave them a school shirt and held quarterly academic challenges within her school. She also organized a field trip with the University of Utah called Imagine You. And the students were able to see many career opportunities in action. So Jennifer Bodell, one of our principals, and here's what she received. And again, let's give her a round of applause.
I'm supposed to introduce my family, and they are not going to like this. My husband is in the back standing with the phone, Braden, and he's my biggest fan. And then Tyler, he's really not going to like this. He, he went to Armstrong Academy, and he's 17, 16. And then we've got Brady, and he is my 12-year-old. And I do need to just say thank you to Mr. Howe because I, he's one of my greatest mentors. So thanks for being here. I know you're not here for me, but thanks for being here.
I also wanted to thank Dr. Nye. He came to our last conference that we gave out the award to Jennifer. So that was very nice to have our superintendent there.
Congratulations. Thanks for all the work on this. It's great to see you. It's Judith Hall as a plan. I know. I wish I could.
Jen, we want to know if the bell works. Oh, it does?
By the way, if you're ever hungry for a snow cone, when do you guys do that little thing during the summer? The Falcon Frosties or something?
Every Tuesday from 1 to 3 in July.
Yeah, go get yourself a snow cone and go say hello.
Good evening, Board. It's an honor to be here and share with you some amazing teachers that we have in Granite and some students that are award winners. So I'm going to turn the time over first to Erin Whitehead to present our first teacher award winner.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Nye. Each year, the Utah High School Activities Association presents the Gold Star for Coaching, and they give one for each classification. So there are 28 high schools in Class 5A, and then there are 16 different, excuse me, 16 different sports. And so roughly a little bit around 420 coaches. Out of 420 coaches, the coach that was selected this year was Cypress High School's girls volleyball coach, Centennial Toliofoa. So Coach, you want to come on down here? So Coach, and what's so amazing about this, she just finished her first year of coaching. And this award is based upon sportsmanship and building culture. Talking with Mr. Leroy, the principal at Cypress, he said that Coach Toliofoa has re, basically resurrected the program, got people excited. Kids came out in record numbers to try out for volleyball this year. And in addition to coaching, she's also a Fitness for Life teacher at Cypress, and she teaches a course on People of the Pacific. And we're excited for Coach Toliofoa. What a great honor.
Good job.
One errand.
One errand. Oh.
That's a couple of short errands.
Okay, next is Heidi Sabayos. Heidi was recognized as the Utah State finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. She's a fourth-grade Spanish Dual Immersion and English Dual Immersion teacher at West Kearns. So Heidi, come on up and be recognized. So the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science is the highest award kindergarten through 12th-grade mathematics and science teachers can receive from the U.S. government. Each year, the award criteria alternates years between kindergarten through sixth grade and seventh through 12th grade teachers. This year, kindergarten through sixth grade teachers were recognized, obviously, because Heidi's a fourth-grade teacher. The nominees complete a rigorous application process that allows them to demonstrate deep content knowledge and their ability to adapt to a broad range of learners and teaching environments. A panel of distinguished mathematicians, scientists, and educators at the state and national levels assess the applications before recommending nominees to the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy. Teachers are selected based on their distinction in the classroom and dedication to improve STEM education. And I can vouch that Heidi is an exceptional STEM teacher. So congratulations, Heidi. Okay, next, we've got three teachers from Taylorsville. So it's really Taylorsville High's Knights to shine. Leah Tarrant, the Utah Music Educators Association Choir Senior High School Music Teacher of the Year. Will you please come up and be recognized? This award is given to a high school music teacher who has consistently demonstrated distinct commendable achievement and service to students and the profession. Someone who has participated in and contributed to the activities sponsored by UMEA. Leah is described as an inspirational and ambitious teacher. She is well-respected and admired by all of her colleagues. She leads the Veterans Day Concert and High School Choir PLCs. Leah is also a regional and state leader. Her dynamic and delightful nature is contagious. She brings the community together, and she is a great role model for all of our teachers. Leah is absolutely deserving of this recognition.
Thank you.
Next is Rob Everly from Taylorsville High. He's the Visual Arts, Utah Arts Educator, Utah Arts Educators Association Art History Teacher of the Year. Come on up. This award recognizes an individual who has been actively engaged in teaching art history at the middle and high school levels. Rob has been teaching for 21 years, all of them at Taylorsville High School. He has a master's degree in art education from Boston University. He currently teaches ceramic classes and AP art history. This is actually the second time Rob has been awarded the title of Utah Art History Teacher of the Year. The first time was in 2022. In the spring of 2024, he led a tour group through Rome, Venice, and Florence as the art history guide for a local tour company. He has presented lectures at national conferences for the National Art Education Association in New Orleans, Chicago, and Seattle, and will be presenting at the National AP Summer Conference in Las Vegas in July on building and enhancing your AP art history program. They have a real Granite family. Rob's wife works at Taylorsville High School, is a testing coordinator. His oldest son just graduated from Taylorsville High and is attending the University of Utah in the fall. His other two children attend Neil Armstrong Academy and Benian Junior High.
Congrats, that's awesome.
Thank you. Rob, thanks.
Okay, Guy Mackey from Taylorsville High School, the Utah Driver Traffic Safety Education Association Teacher of the Year. So Guy teaches driver's education with the care and concern of a life-saving course. He takes his position very seriously since he knows each of his students' lives depends on it. He is thorough and informative, following every standard, but at the same time, he makes the material covered interesting and applicable to each of the students' lives. Guy likes to have fun and laugh with his students when possible. Guy is patient and accommodating. He's organized, responsible, and knowledgeable. All students like him, and he has a great success rate. Guy is always at the school for driver's education or athletics. He also always portrays that he is happy to be there. Guy never passes the buck. He's a problem solver and will deal with any problem. Nobody works harder than Guy. His hobbies are, he's an avid runner. He's a graduate of Taylorsville High School, which I always love to see when teachers go back to the school where they were at. He started teaching driver's education in 1998 at Taylorsville High, has a beautiful and supportive wife, and two beautiful and supportive daughters. Congratulations, Guy. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Stasha Wheeler, who is our Social Studies Content Specialist. And she's going to introduce the National History Day finalist that went to the National History Day, national competition.
Board and Dr. Nye, it's a pleasure to be here. Before I read the students' names, I want to give you a little bit of background on this competition. The National History Day competition actually started about 50 years ago. It engages more than half a million students across the country in a historical research project. Students in grades six through 12 select their own topic and find evidence for primary and secondary documents to support their analysis. They then present their findings through papers, exhibits, performances, documentaries, or websites. Students have the option of working individually or in a group. At each competition level, a panel of judges score the projects and interview each student involved. For Granite students, the competition begins at the Salt Lake Regional Contest, where the top three projects in each category advance to state. At state, the top two projects for each category advance to the national competition in Washington, DC, which was held just a couple of weeks ago. Students who make it to nationals are in the top 1% of all students who engage in the National History Day competition. the National History Day competition. So this is an incredible accomplishment. As a classroom teacher, I had the opportunity to do this project with my students, and so I can vouch for the hours and sweat and tears and love that they have put into this project, and I'm really excited to read their names to you. So when I say your names, please come up, shake their hands. You've seen the drill. Okay, from Westlake STEM, we have Strahinja Dragichewicz. Aubrey Parker, Brooke Rapp, and Jay Ricks. From Granger High School, we have Rebecca Allison, Savannah Moore, and Grace Winder. And from Skyline High School, we have Sophie Smith, Addison DeBoer, Stella Fonsbeck, Adelaide Scott, Anqualee, Maika Tian, and Mindy Phan. All right, and while they're getting this photo set up, there are some students who attended National History Day but could not be with us tonight, so I want to go ahead and just read their names. From Granger, we have Paige Meters and Regan Willie. From Skyline, we have Melan Jessup, Jonah Fernley, Conlin Nguyen, Sandra Tang, Ziki Zhu, and Sophia Shapiro.
And parents, we'll have all those shots on our Facebook page as well, our social media channels.
Can we also have the parents stand up and be recognized? Because we know that... We know that without your support, that wouldn't have happened, probably. So thank you for your support as well. Was that it? Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on in our agenda. We have patron participation. Yes, you are excused. Go have ice cream. Bring some back for us. Oh, that's right. We wanted to recognize that Representative J.D. Weeks, also Roner, came in and is here right now. So thank you, J.D., for being here. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on. Patron participation time. We do not have any at this time, and so we are going to move on to our consent items. We've had some time to look these over, read through them, make sure, ask any questions. So with that, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions?
Just comment, as you noted, there's a couple of things that I don't support on the consent agenda, some contracts, curriculum associates, TEACH FX, things we've spoken about in the past. So just outlining my no vote.
All right, no further discussion. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
All right, Ben, did you have something?
Yeah, sorry about that. It appears we did have one additional recognition, really quick, and I was told they were not here, but they are here. So I'm going to go ahead and take this one, but Audrey Sue was our 2024 U.S. Presidential Scholar recognition. She was also a Sterling Scholar. Would you come on down, please? So we previously recognized her as one of our Sterling Scholars from Skyline High School. Correct me if I say anything wrong, okay? And I apologize. We had somebody here set up to recognize this one, and they told me you weren't here, so I apologize. We did not mean to skip you. So we did want to absolutely recognize this. This is an incredible honor. So not in addition to the Sterling Scholar, she is also a Presidential Scholar. So we want to give her a big round of applause and recognize the contribution she's making not only to her community in Skyline, but as an outstanding student of Granite School District. We're so proud to have you be a part of us, so thank you. Can we embarrass them and have them come down and be a part of our picture, please? There she is. I wondered where she went. Come on down.
Ben, can somebody get a picture of that on her phone? Because she'll probably want that. And Audrey, would you mind doing that? I'm sure she wants that picture.
I am the district board president.
There you go. I just want to make sure she gets it.
While they're taking pictures, I just want to recognize what a big deal a Presidential Scholar is. That's, I know we, a lot of us look at the Sterling Scholars and are like, that's awesome, but Presidential Scholars, like, eons above that. It's amazing and incredible. So congratulations. We really appreciate all that you do to represent Skyline and your family and our community. So congratulations, Audrey.
Point of order again. I was just informed that Brooks Gunderson from Skyline High School is here as well, and I apologize, I thought Sherri was going to be doing this recognition, so I'd like to have them come down and be recognized. They are, there you are. Thank you. In fact, you should be the one telling us how amazing the Presidential Scholar recognition is, and then we can tell you how you are amazing for helping our students do that. Would you mind?
Yeah, so I've taught Audrey for about three years now, and I got to say, it was a huge pleasure to be her teacher. She's fantastic. I know, you know, like, we have a hard time teaching. It's one of the hardest jobs. I got to say, it's probably the hardest. And I think, you know, what makes a teacher great is having a great student, and she is definitely, she has held the bar high, yeah. She's irreplaceable, so.
Tell us about what it takes to become a U.S. Presidential Scholar. Short version.
I don't know if I want to answer that question.
Well, tonight, we're here to also recognize this outstanding teacher. He is also being recognized this evening as the Presidential Scholar's Program's distinguished teacher. So not only do we have the pleasure of recognizing one of his students, but we also want to recognize his incredible accomplishment and the pride that he's bringing to Granite School District for his outstanding efforts. So, Mr. Brooks Gunderson.
We're going to include your guest with you. Is this one I introduce? If you'd like to have Audrey come up and pitch her, that's okay. All right, we got it. I think that's it.
Are you sure, Ben?
Does there anybody else here who would like to?
Okay. All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to our first readings. We have two. We'll invite Doug up to go through Article 8A34, which is our dual-language immersion and other school-based programs, and then Article 5C12, school support organizations. And these are all first readings. These are both first readings.
Both first readings, you're right. Thank you, President McDermott and board members. Once again, these policies have been discussed in our Law and Policy Committee, and you've had an opportunity to read through them. Article 8A34 is our dual-language immersion and other school-based programs policy. This policy is intended to create a committee that will provide for the ongoing systematic and orderly review of school-based programs. These are defined as, the school-based programs are such programs as international baccalaureate, advanced officer, our ROTC program, our dual-language immersion program, our advanced via individual determination or avid program, CTE programs, and others. And the board recognizes that these programs provide special and unique opportunities to students, but it also recognizes that if any of these programs interfere with the school's ability to adequately allocate resource and staff for the needs of all students, this policy will allow the board to be able to review those programs and determine whether modifications need to be made. So you've had the policy to read. If you have any further questions about it, I'd be happy to respond.
Are there any questions? We went over this pretty thoroughly in law and policy, but any questions on it? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve Article 8A34, dual-language immersion and other school-based programs as a first reading.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Article 8A34, dual-language immersion and other school-based programs as a first reading. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Can, whether it's you, Nicole, you said you discussed this at late grade length at policy meeting, or policy committee meeting. Can you provide a little more color around what this committee will look like in terms of its representation from various stakeholders and areas of the district?
I believe that was outlined in the administrative memo, if you do want to go and check that.
Yeah, the administrative memo that I sent to the board members. So this policy would include individuals from the district who are selected specifically for their expertise, and it would also include members of the community for their input as well. So the committee itself is organized not to make decisions, but to make recommendations to the board regarding any type of modification that would need to be made or that may be suggested to the board for any of these programs.
Thanks. I probably could have asked a better question. I think there's some, maybe concern isn't the right word, but there's always concern, perhaps, from creating another committee, more bureaucracy, more layers of red tape. So I just think there's constituents who are listening to this that would like to hear a little bit more about the role of this committee. I appreciate it's for recommendations and for community input, and I appreciate and I applaud that effort, certainly, but I'm also sensitive to those concerns that have been expressed about ability to take action rather than just add more red tape to an already bureaucratic process, perhaps.
And we did talk about it also being a committee that works in conjunction or together with our already functioning...
PAC committee.
PAC committee, because most likely this will become or be part of a PAC study. So it's very likely that a lot of those committee members, wouldn't you say, isn't that where we landed?
Yeah, I think we're trying to model this draft policy with our current process as we're discussing DLI programs as part of the current boundary study. So there will be a lot of community engagement with respect to anticipated proposals that will come in the July board meeting.
Thank you for that additional color.
Does that clarify anything?
I think that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, with that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, thanks, Julie, sorry. Okay, motion passes, and we will move on to the next item.
So the next item is Article 5C12. This is school support organization. School support organizations are organizations that are made up of patrons, community members, and whose really only goal is to help schools and to provide additional resources to schools. And so we want to make sure that we are providing a framework for those organizations to make contributions in a way that's lawful and is most useful to schools. So this policy outlines those requirements. It also provides some additional opportunities for these organizations, Booster Clubs, PTA, and some of these other organizations, to have access to the use of school buildings, the names of schools for their activities and that sort of thing. So if you have any other questions about this policy, again, the administrative memo that further kind of explains how the procedure for this policy is to be administered is in Administrative Memo 131, but if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions? All right, I will entertain a motion then for a first reading.
I move that we accept Article 5C12, school support organizations as a first reading.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Article 5C12, school support organizations as a first reading. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is Julie going to do it?
I would say aye.
Okay, sorry. I was waiting for you, Julie. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, we have a time-sensitive budget hearing that is supposed to happen at 8:00 because we only have nine minutes, and we have some people signed up to speak to this specific agenda item. I'm going to suggest that we put the second reading of our electronic devices and acceptable use technology off until after our budget hearing, just so that we can make sure we give them a chance to be heard, and we don't have to rush them along. So with your approval, board, I'm going to say that we take a five-minute break and come back at 8:00 so that we can convene our budget hearing. All right. All right. Welcome, everyone, for our budget hearing. We are going to turn the time over to our budget gurus. You too, Brian. To take it away and tell us all about the budget.
All right, well, thank you for the time tonight. We're excited to present the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We appreciate all your input and cooperation in putting the document together and all the information that's included. We'll keep it very short. So I'll turn the time over to Brian Ipsen, our budget director, to talk through the highlights of the budget, and then we'll leave the time over for public comment.
When he says "we're excited," he really means it. We're like really actually excited about this stuff, so.
I'm going to take, sorry, sorry, Brian, my apologies. For those of you who are here concerning the budget, we just want to remind you there is some place to sign up out in the hall if you'd like to speak to this. And just want to remind you that before we do this, if you need us to go down to the hall and sign up. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Thank you, board members. So we're going to give a very high-level view of the budget today, but we will give information about where you can find the budget document, where you can go through it and see the details of what we're presenting here today. So, oh, Ben. Oh, there we go, okay. Do we got full screen? Okay. Okay. So our budget document presents a balanced budget for all of the funds in the school district for which the board has legal responsibility. This includes the general fund, which is maintenance and operations. This is, most of the salary and benefits of the district are in the general fund. The district activity fund, which is fees, donations, fundraisers, and the like at the school level, so locally generated funds. Pass-through tax fund is where the taxes for redevelopment and charter schools are accounted for. Our Granite Education Foundation Fund, which is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. The capital outlay and bond projects funds, our construction projects, school projects, anything capital-related is in those funds. Debt service is for the payment of our bonds issued for construction. And finally, the school lunch fund, which is our school breakfast and lunch programs and the funds associated with providing those services at our schools.
And that's, how long is that book? For a little light reading?
It's about 150 pages. So there's a lot of good stuff in there, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep. The budget process that we follow is essentially the same thing for every fund that we prepare a budget for. Estimating available revenues and other resources, estimating the expenditures of the fund with input from district departments, from schools, from district leadership throughout the planned spending process that happens in the spring, and then balancing the budget. Sometimes those two don't quite line up, and we have to make some tough decisions about what stays and what goes in order to keep a balanced budget. Julie can't see this, I apologize. I need to share the screen real quick. Excellent. The adopted budget each year can be amended by board action at any point in the school year. But typically, the process we follow is an adoption of a budget in June for the coming fiscal year, and then revisions that happen throughout the year. Things that we, oh, actually, we got this grant, or we got some other new funding source that we weren't aware of when the original budget document was put together. Those things are compiled throughout the school year, and a final budget is put together at the end of the year in June at this same hearing, and that final budget is then put forward for approval from the board for the school year. So it can't happen more than just in June if there were significant changes or other things that would require that. But the typical process is in June of each year to do a revision of that budget. So where can you find the Granite School District budget? Well, you go to the district webpage, granitescoles.org, and there is currently a bulletin out there with the budget book document where you can open this up and read through all of those pages of the budget document. It also is posted on the Budget Development webpage along with some information about property taxes that are linked to the property tax notices that will go out later in July. Key budget dates. March 1st of this year was the last date of the Legislative General Session. This is a big deal for budget purposes where we learn what revenues will be available, what happened during the session. There's always a number of things that are very impactful as far as our school district budget goes. So that day is important, and following the legislative session, we start to get a real idea of where things are landing. May 31st, we had the proposed budget published online and available for public review and sent to you all as board members to review as well. On June 5th, we advertised in the Salt Lake Tribune and Esret News this budget hearing tonight with instructions on how to access that budget. We also sent out mailers to district residents with information on how to access the budget and the timing and location of this hearing tonight. And then today, the purpose of this budget hearing is to approve the revised 2324 budget, to adopt next year's budget, the 2425 budget, along with setting preliminary property tax rates for the year, and then to authorize a truth and taxation hearing to be held on August 6th. And we'll get into the whys of that particular motion in a bit. So August 6th will be the date of that truth and taxation hearing where pending approval, those final property tax rates will be determined. So just a high-level view of the budget, all of our funds. $992 million is the total budget. About 710 of that is in the general fund with another $113 million in capital and smaller amounts in the other funds there, adding up to that total of $992 million. So we're going to talk specifically about the general fund and the balancing of the general fund today. And like I mentioned, this same process happened with all of our funds. The general fund just happens to be where all the crazy action happens, right? Where everything's going on. So as far as new funding sources that are available in the general fund next year, there are a couple of things that happen at a state level which have impacts on our budget. The first one is the value of the weighted pupil unit. It went up by 5% in the legislative session, which means that for every weighted pupil unit that the district generates, that amount that each one of those is worth went up by 5%. In dollars, this means about $13.6 million additional dollars flowing into the district next year. There are other MSP, or Minimum School Program, adjustments that happen, the biggest one of which is the at-risk program, which essentially provides extra WPUs for students who are in specific at-risk categories in our district. So this would be students who qualify for free or reduced lunch along with students that are English language learners in the district. So that was another $4.7 million. On the flip side, we are losing around $4.3 million in state property tax guarantee dollars. This is related to certified property tax rates coming down as property values go up, and it's negatively impacting the state dollars that we get to guarantee those property tax revenues. We also have about $2 million in new growth in property taxes. What this means is that as construction happens in the district and new properties come online in the district, we generate revenue, new revenues from those properties. We'll talk about this in a second. But for existing properties, the certified rate pulls that down and essentially leaves us revenue-neutral where we're getting the same dollars this year from property taxes that we got in the previous year. The URS rate adjustments are essentially, the Utah retirement systems have adjusted their contribution rates in 2425, generating a bit of extra savings on the district's end. We had the closure of Western Hills Elementary and associated operational costs with the school that are going to save us some money. And then we have this bottom line, the base budget reductions and savings, which includes some administrative adjustments as far as FTEs go, or full-time equivalents. So some shuffling of duties and adjustments of positions that are generating some savings on the administrative side in the district, along with just a study of kind of what we're using in our budgets and vacancy savings that are allowing us to kind of harvest some of that unused budget to reduce that base budget overall and say, okay, we're consistently seeing that certain positions are remaining unfilled, and so we're going to go ahead and reduce the budget to capture that savings on an ongoing basis. So overall, we're looking at about $18.9 million in new funding sources or savings of expenditures that we've had in the past. Then we get down to new costs in 2425. So every year, as employees advance on the salary schedule, they have a step. If they're not at the end of their steps on the salary schedule, they essentially move up on that salary schedule, and it generates an additional cost. That cost is $6.3 million in 2425, which is partially offset by. That cost is 6.3 million in 24-25, which is partially offset by turnover savings when employees leave the district and a new employee starts at the beginning of that salary schedule, it generates savings. We have health insurance increases of approximately 1.7 million that are just due to premiums increasing and, and costs in the health insurance plan of the district increasing. CTE program, the state requires that the district contribute in a certain amount of money into the CTE program. It's called the Maintenance of Effort for our district. That's increasing by $587,000, which is essentially just money going into that CTE program from, from the district's side. Other budget items, property and liability insurance went up drastically in 24-25. I think we've all seen this on our own personal side with, with both auto and, and homeowners' insurance. The same thing is happening on a bigger scale with the school district that we've got 1.9 million in additional costs for property and liability insurance in fiscal year 25. And then we're going to see a common theme in the next four lines where it's essentially, we've, we've lost funding that used to be available to us and it's, it's requiring us to put district dollars in, in the place of the funding that was there before. So, the first one is for literacy coaches. There is an early, early literacy program that was part of the changes in the legislative session. That money went away. We no longer get the, just over $1 million that we used to receive through that program. With Beverly Taylor-Sornson, a similar thing happened. The, the program was not eliminated, but we, we are standing to lose some, some funding as a result of changes in that formula in how they allocate. The state allocates the funds for the, the Beverly Taylor-Sornson Arts Program. We have been receiving funding for an English language learner grant. We, we've purchased software for English language learners and, and that funding is also going away. And then finally, there are a number of social worker positions in the district that have been funded with federal dollars that is going to be gone in fiscal year 25 and as a result, we're proposing that those be funded with, with district dollars in, in the new school year. Special ed co-teach model is a change made by, by special ed to essentially have classrooms where a general ed and a special ed teacher work together in teaching students with disabilities and students, regular ed students together in a classroom. I think you all have heard some of, you know, in study sessions and other, other settings, heard about those changes. It's approximately 1.5 million for that new adoption of the co-teach model. And then finally, additional school assistant principals and intern, administrative interns in our elementary schools of approximately 1 million. So, total on, on these other budget items is about 7.2 million dollars. And then finally, employee compensation and negotiations. So, the budget has an estimated or projected 2% COLA for district employees. And you can see the, the totals here of what that cost is for the, the cost of living adjustment, 5.4 million for teacher, admin, and middle managers, and then ESPs, secretaries and hourly of approximately 1.4 million. And then we always factor in the cost to our special ed programs of that cost of living adjustment because their dollars are essentially what they are, right? And, and as a COLA is approved, it, it increases those costs. And so, the practice has been to fund that with district dollars essentially to, to offset the impact of that COLA on the special ed program. And then other employee group negotiation items of various things that were discussed and, and agreed upon during the, the negotiations process of about 630,000. So, in total there, we're looking at 8.8 million on the compensation and negotiations piece. So, when we put it all together, we're, we're left with a need to have some one-time funding sources to offset the impact of some of these items. So, the goal when we went into this, this school year, this new school year, was to get these things done without an increase in property taxes for operations. And through the various things we went through, the budget exercises that we did, which includes using some, some special ed funds that are, that are available to fund the, the co-teach model and then just district fund balance, we were able to get to a place where we're balancing the budget. But that was obviously quite a tricky thing to do this year with, with all of these changes and, you know, monies that are going away and, and the challenges that we're, we're dealing with from, from all sides. But that was something that we were able to, to accomplish as we put the budget together this year was that there will be no property tax increase on the operations side. As we look at how we prioritize our new resources, we, we broke this out into academic, social skills and dispositions, talent development, and operations. Basically, the, the categories related to the strategic plan of the district. You can see about 54% academic, 37% operations, 8.2% on social skills and dispositions, and 1% on talent development. So, we've, we've kind of gone through the exercise of thinking through how each of these budget priorities fits into, to our, our district plan and, and goals.
Brian, can I just ask you a question on that side?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, for me, it's very hard to understand the line between what is academic and what is operations because, you know, it's like all academic in some ways. So, can you just tell me?
Yeah.
A little bit about how you define those?
Yeah, so the, the big things that fit into that operations category were our property and liability insurance increases that we talked about, along with those new administrative positions. That's what we, we put into the operations area. As far as academic, we included the CTE Maintenance of Effort, those literacy coaches, the Beverly Taylor-Sornson Program, special ed co-teach model, and the ELL software. So, that's how that distinction was made. We, we kind of added the operations piece, just recognizing that there are certain things, like you say, where it's all done with the intent of providing better education for our students, but there are some things that don't really fit great into any of them perfectly and, and so that's where we, we put those two items is in that operations bucket.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I think that's really informative. I mean, like if you look at the, the idea that the assistant principals are in the operations bucket there is so, shows back how nebulous this is because to me, that is such a huge piece of the academic. Fortunately, it's, it's really hard to categorize all these things. And when it says operations, I just want people to know that a lot of that operations is actually still directly impacting academics, or I guess it's all indirectly impacting it.
Yep, and I would, I would say those prin, assistant principals could have an impact on all three of those areas, right? As far as social skills and dispositions, academic, and talent development.
Jeff, question? Yeah, just along the same lines, and I had a discussion on this last year, Todd, as well, but can you break down what the 8.2% in social skills and dispositions comes from? How do we pull that out separately?
So, that has specifically to do with the social workers that are replacing the lost federal funds. So, that's where that number comes from specifically.
All right. So, we'll talk property tax rates for a minute. This is normally where it kind of gets a little confusing, so hopefully we can do a good job of explaining this.
You mean to say exciting.
Exciting is what I meant, yes, sorry. So, the basic concept with, with property taxes is that there is a certified tax rate every year, which as property values in the district increase, which is normally what happens, the certified tax rate comes down to make it so that the district gets the same revenues in the next year that we got in the year previous. So, this year, the district had an average of 8.06% increase in valuations across the district, which, which actually surprised me. I wasn't expecting it to be that high. But what that means is that property tax rates have come down to make it so that on an average basis, the, the revenues flowing to the district will be the same when you exclude that new growth for construction and on an average basis, the property tax bill of a taxpayer should stay the same. Now, that doesn't mean everyone's property tax bill will stay the same because that's on an average basis. So, depending on where that particular property taxpayer's value went compared to the average, that will determine whether the, the true bill went up or down in, in the given year. So, we've split this out to show property tax rates from operations and then we'll talk about capital and debt service after that. So, the three property tax rates that fund operations in the district are the state basic levy, the board local levy, and the voted local levy. The state basic levy, we just levy the rate that the state tells us to, to levy. And we've still are estimating this rate at this point in time because we don't know what that will end up being. We, we have an idea based on valuations, but we aren't sure yet. The other two, we can determine what that rate will be through the, the county auditor who gives us that certified tax rate and tells us what that rate is that we will, we will assess this year to bring in the same revenues as the year previous. So, I've shown these rates here with an average home dollars amount to, to show what an average home property taxpayer would, would be paying on their bill. So, you can see that the total here between those three levies is going from 1,062 to 1,059. So, on the operations side, we really are staying completely with that certified rate and, and the, the property tax bill for a taxpayer will not be much different at all from the previous school year. On the capital outlay and debt service side, this is where we have a continuance of the plan that's been rolling forward for a number of years where we are moving property tax rate from the debt service levy into the capital local levy to allow us to rebuild schools and continue with that capital improvement plan of the district. So, that combined rate between the piece of the capital local levy that's been moved from debt service and the debt service levy itself is this .001812. And you can see that the proposed rates for 24-25 keep that combined rate exactly as it was the year before. Now, what that means when we're freezing that rate and keeping it the same is that as valuations go up, there will be a slight increase in the, the property tax dollars that a, that a taxpayer will pay. So, you can see on the, the regular piece of the capital local levy, that's staying exactly the same, but on the, the piece that's come from the debt service levy, there will be a, a slight increase in a property tax bill. And, and so overall, we're looking at about a $39 increase on an average home. Again, that's just an average home in the school district. And these revenues are crucial to continuing with the plan, the pay-as-you-go model that we've, we've undertaken to do and, and especially as we wrap up the projects at Skyline and Cypress, to have funding to embark on the, the next projects in line and continue forward with that plan. So, when we look at all levies together, this is just putting everything together along with that charter school levy that is, is staying fairly flat at, at about $35 on an average home. So, again, we're, we're looking at maybe $36 on an average home is the, the amount that that bill would increase. And because of the way we're doing this and moving that rate from debt service to capital, it requires that we go through the, the truth and taxation process and, and have a public hearing related to that tax increase as the state views it as an increase, even though the rate is kind of just shifting from one bucket to another. So, with that, there are three recommended motions for this evening. Again, approving the final budget as published for 23-24, adopting next year's budget with a preliminary tax rate of .005997, subject to changes in the state basic levy, and then authorizing that truth and taxation hearing to be held on August 6th. So, with that, we'll go ahead and turn it back over to you, President McDermott.
All right. Before we have discussion, we're going to go ahead and do the hearing portion of this and have public comment. All right, we have one person signed up for public comment for the budget. That's Amy Warren.
Sure.
Oh, sorry, Quinn, I apologize. Quinn Cotter, Amy, were you, you're looking, were you not intending to sign up for the budget? No, okay. Quinn Cotter, we're going to invite you up to share with us your comments on the budget.
It's a long walk. So, I printed out and, and read through most of this budget and I just felt that I wanted to comment on three points. They're all on the same topic and it's on federal money in public schools. Point one is that if you read through the Constitution, power is not given by the Constitution to the Federal Congress to establish a National Department of Education, but the Constitution does not prohibit the states from establishing public schools. So, this means the public schools are a local issue of the people in the states. If the states wanted to properly give the power to the Federal Congress to establish a National Department of Education, then an amendment would have to be successfully proposed, then ratified by 75% of the states. Instead, Congress has unconstitutionally given themselves this power to administrate education. Point number two is that the United States is now 35 trillion in debt and growing exponentially. This means that the major areas where federal funds are used in Granite are precarious. The money we take is debt money and it will not last much longer. In fact, I'm afraid of serious events that may occur within the next year. Point three is that I was surprised that federal money is only 8.4% of the budget and per the, the presentation, it's actually going to go down a little bit. Because I understand that this money must be spent how the federal government dictates, which means that you lose your control. You trade your sovereignty and your power to be dictated to. We lose our state sovereignty by taking federal money. We lose control of the curriculum that we would prefer locally rather than have forced upon us from afar. We also disobey the Constitution. On a personal note, over the last 18 years, the company I work for has been purchased five times, each time growing in size substantially. I think we're now 50, 60,000 employees with noticeable increases in centralization, bureaucracy, and overhead spending that we did not have when we were a local and small company or smaller company. So, per the Constitution, education is a local, state issue. I would urge the board to remove federal money from the public school system, work to amend the budget without raising taxes. This might require evaluating programs or bureaucracy efficiency and trimming them. If you can motion today to do, to do that, start, do it. Otherwise, work on removing the federal funds to zero by next year. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotter. All right. With no further comments, Amy, Amy indicated that she wanted to speak to something else on our agenda, so we're going to go ahead and move on to board comment or questions. Do we have any comments or questions?
I, I have a question, actually. Brian, can you put a slide right before this? I think that's the slide I'm going to talk about. Nope, one more, sorry. Yeah, this and I guess the slides over surrounding it. You know, we had put together, or, or the Granite School Board had put together years, not a year ago, but you know, within the last 10 years, a capital plan and that's when we began to do like, wow. And that's when we began to do our bond. And when we had, you know, our last bonds and our levies, recent levies, have all been kind of based around funding that plan. And, you know, what we basically did was create a budget, which was a prediction of what would happen and what monies we would need. And now we can look at that and see where we're at and move forward and make new decisions based on the information that is actual, right? And so I think what I'm wondering is, where are we at on updating our capital plan? Because as I look at these funds, I'm concerned about it because I know, I know that this budget is not going to keep us on the schedule we planned on. And I don't necessarily need to know what the plan is yet. I just need to know, I wanted to know, are we working on that?
I'm assuming you're talking about the, like, the phase one that we voted for, the original bond. Is that correct, Julie?
Yeah, that whole plan. You know, we were going to now be able to just save our, you know, like, carry over time, be able to have money in the pot for our project. And now it looks like we can continue to do that, that phase, yeah, those phases are, you know, further and further out in the future. And with the issues that we were talking about in our state, that means like unreinforced masonry, plus all of the just general aging of our buildings. I know that I've been asking, can we have a, we need to update that strategy. I'd like to know what people think that we ought to do, or how to update that. And we really ought to be looking at it to update every year, you know, when we have actual information come in, right? It's like a budget. It should be rebudgeted every year, I think. So I'm just wondering what we're doing about that, because it feels like that plan might not be up to date at this point.
Take that, Don. Rich?
Sir, thanks, Madam President. Julie raised an important point. Part of the study identified, even though dated, needs that the district had in terms of its capital projects and facilities. As you pointed out, the need hasn't necessarily changed. The order of those facilities and the intentionality around their study still remains. To your point, though, the years have been added from the original plan, given inflation and a variety of other factors. But a large part of the school replacement cycles or the next projects that were available still remains, and even though it's dated. I think also what perhaps you're teasing out is, what about our existing facilities and the order and their condition and which priorities we move forward on, given our existing capital resources? And as you recall, the board, and for the public's awareness, when they passed the original bond in 2017, adopted a pay-as-you-go model. But as you're pointing out, Julie, that particular model that was approved at that time isn't necessarily keeping pace with the need that was identified also at that time. And so, given that current strategy, if the board wanted to consider a different strategy, certainly staff would go to work on something like that. I will also say that, I'm working with Don, and he could speak to this too, if you will, Madam President, if you'd like. We are working to update conditions of our buildings because those do change over time, and they do, in many cases, require capital investments.
Rich, thank you for that. I think what I'd like to see is, I, yeah, I think that it would be really helpful to, I mean, especially we've got a fully new administration between our business administrator and our superintendent from the time when that was put together. And so I'd love to see, if you guys put your minds to it, look at the current situation, and then come back with recommendations for us of what you think maybe what you're going to find is, no, 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 we just continue on the same path. I mean, that would take longer. Or maybe you want, maybe there's another recommendation, depending on, depending on the urgency of the needs. But I just would, I don't think that I'm necessarily saying that the plan is defunct or anything like that. I think I'm just saying, I think it might be time to look at it again, and especially with the new eyes.
Certainly, if that is the will of the board, we could put forward a few different scenarios and model what that would look like and associated costs per each of those models for the board's consideration, if that's the will of the board.
What I'm hearing, Julie, is you'd like to have this be reexamined and perhaps brought back as a study session might be the recommendation. Is that correct?
I am in favor of voting to approve this property tax rate budget as is the way it's been explained. I want to look at some ideas and thoughts for our next year's budget.
Okay.
So the study session, it would be a study session, I think, but it would not prevent us from passing this current budget.
Sure. Okay. Okay. So noted. We will reexamine that and see when we can maybe have an update on that and bring that back as a board. Kim, you have something?
Do have a question, Brian. So I'm trying to understand, to make sure that I'm clear on this. So we are not increasing taxes this year. We made, you know, did the work to figure out how to balance our budget without requiring a tax increase. The levy switch that has to happen is simply from one levy to another, right? It's not an increase there either. But then, I think you said there's an increase of about $35 per house, and so I'm not putting the dots together as to where that comes from.
So on the rate side, you can see that the rate between last year and this year has decreased. There's a decrease there. There's a portion of that rate that we are freezing or holding at the same rate as the previous year. And that was the planned rollout of this capital improvement plan from the beginning, was to keep that piece of our property tax rate frozen and essentially capture new revenues from the growth in valuations for that specific piece of the property tax. And so, in the eyes of the Tax Commission and those who would apply the laws surrounding truth and taxation, that is a property tax increase. We're taking taxes or rate from the debt service levy, and we're moving it over to our capital local levy to get ongoing dollars in the capital outlay fund.
Could you clarify for us? I think she's pointing out, I heard the same thing, that there was going to be a 30, roughly $35 increase. So I think just a clarification on that piece.
So it's not subject to the equalization like our other tax rate is, because we're just keeping it the same rate. Usually, and the other tax rate, we would drop it in order to continue to collect the same amount of money. But because house values go up, we estimate that that one, staying at the same rate, will stay, will go up as well.
And that frozen portion, when was that decided? Again?
2017.
2017.
Correct.
I just, as a general caution to all of us, I think we have to be very careful in our terminology, as exhibited by your question, Kim. And the slide earlier stated there's no property tax increase as it relates to operations.
Correct.
And that's correct. But there is a tax increase as it relates to the capital budget, the capital fund, if you will, for the district.
Yes.
The rate, and I'm not trying to get totally nerded out here, but the rate is staying the same. That's what's frozen in 2017. But because property tax values continue to increase, that property tax also continues to increase, notwithstanding the fact that the rate has been frozen. So I think it's important, what you said, Brian, that in the eyes of the Tax Commission, and by definition of the laws and truth of taxation, we are, there's a proposal to increase taxes here with this budget by approximately that amount, that $39 on an average home in the district.
Which is why a truth and taxation hearing would be needed in August.
Precisely.
Does that make sense, Kim? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one more. Sorry.
Okay, sorry, Julie.
I was positive. Can you go back, Brian, to show, let's see. I just wanted to make sure to note that we are going to be using ongoing, I'm sorry, one-time funds this year in order to pay for ongoing costs, in order to not increase the rate of property taxes. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. So this slide here illustrates the one-time funding of approximately 2.2 million needed to balance this budget in 2425. Now, there's many moving parts to a budget, and this is the plan as it sits right now in order to balance the budget. There could be savings that result from some budgets not being fully spent, and we might end up using less than that in fund balance. But that's the plan as it sits right now, is that there's about 2.2 million of one-time fund balance needed to get us to a balanced budget.
To be fair, that was part of the discussion, Julie. If you remember that we said we can, we don't feel good about using one-time monies to balance our budget, but we're kind of in a, you know, either we raise taxes or we use one-time money to get us past that.
Yeah. I think, Nicole, I'm wanting to bring this up, not for my own clarification, but because I want the public to understand this. I want them to know that we are doing this as a one-time thing, because in my mind, I cannot see a way that we will not need to increase taxes again next year if things are in a current state. And so I want very good preparation for that, especially as we go into the next legislative session. I want people to understand that as, you know, income taxes lowered on a state level, and as our funding is not given to us on a state level, we have to figure out how to make that up. It doesn't just appear out of nowhere. And, you know, we're already working, you know, we're achieving great things, but we have people who are really in need of resources in order to be able to perform their best, specifically our teachers, right? And we cannot continue to starve them. And so I just, I want the public to understand what we're doing here and what we're sacrificing in order to not raise taxes for them. I want them to know that, you know, at some point, somebody's going to have to pay the piper, and that's going to be in taxes. And so I just want people to be educated about that.
Thanks, Julie. Any further comments? All right, we have three recommended motions.
Can you scroll to that slide, please? I move that we approve the final revised 2023-2024 budget as published.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final revised 2023-2024 budget as published. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next one?
I move that we adopt the proposed 2024-2025 budget as published and set the preliminary tax rate to 0.005997, subject changes, subject to changes in the state basic levy.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. To adopt the proposed 2024-2025 budget as published and set the preliminary tax rate to 0.005997, subject to changes in the state basic levy. Is there any discussion?
I do have comments on this one. So I do appreciate, like, there's been a lot of discussion. You know, it's not just today we're talking about this. We've talked about this many times, over and over. And I know there was a lot of work done to make sure that we balanced our budget this year, and I appreciate that work. So thank you for that. I want to talk about our approach going forward, though. I really would like us as a board to look at seriously some of the things that are costing us a lot of money, such as our one-to-one Chromebook policy, and all of the technology and licensing and all of that that goes with that, that's a huge expense to the district. You know, programs that we bring on due to state or federal funding and that funding runs out, we can't always just continue those programs with our own money and by raising taxes. I think we need to start taking a look at some of those things, like, what programs do we actually want to keep? What can we not reasonably keep? I think that's part of our role, is being responsible with public funds. You know, we can't always just keep everything, even if we, in the moment that we had it, enjoyed it, right? I just want to take a harder look at some of those programs, right? I'm just asking that as a board, we try to do that more in-depth in the coming year. Because while I will go ahead and approve this budget today, I can't say that I always will every year when I see a lot of things. I mean, Todd, Brian, thank you for the spreadsheet you shared. Julie and I asked for a list of all the different contracts that we have with different third-party vendors, so we can try and see where some of that money is going, how much we're spending on those kinds of things. That's another example of something that I'd like to look at. We have a lot of money going to these software contracts, software companies. Do we really need all of those things? So again, just putting that before the board, because I don't think I can in good conscience continue to vote for programs down the road that, you know, we had funding at one time and now we don't. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Speaking only for myself, Kim, I think I agree with you, and that's why we vote on this annually and not out into the future. So I certainly agree with you, and I certainly agree with the premise of taking a hard look at where our money is spent, at least annually through this process, but far more often in the interim.
I do want to add to that, though, that it's not like we haven't been taking a hard look at it either, right? I mean, we have pared things down. If you could, we are short $2.5 million, and we tried to pare that down. Kim, you and I tried to pare that down. We could not find places where we were looking to do that, because at some point, you can see that when you pare it down, and when you take away programs and you decide not to fund, you impact learning. And so we have to remember, this is not just, this budgeting process is directly tied to learning. And the more that we make the decisions to cut and cut and cut, I think that we have to really balance that against learning. Now, I'm not saying that every single thing that we're spending our money on is 100%, you know, the most efficient way of spending our money. I don't necessarily think that. But I do want to just recognize that those efforts have been being made all along, and that at some point, there is a moment where you just cannot cut anymore. I'm not sure that we're there. I'm not sure that we're there, but I, I want to set the expectation that at some point, when you start cutting, you, you begin to cut the learning. And at this point, when we look at our test scores and we see that there's so much room for growth, one might ask, well, if we could put in a few more resources, maybe we could get that growth. So I, I think that it kind of, the discussion has to go both ways and that's why I think what you might have liked, that's why we have it every year.
Thanks, Julie, and I, just to follow up on that, I don't mean to say work hasn't been done, but I, I don't know that we've had discussions about specific programs, about Chromebooks. I know we haven't talked about those things and those are things that I came away from those meetings that we had, Julie, with in my head as things we need to look at, as places we probably can cut back. And I understand the, the idea of, you know, not wanting to cut and impact education and academics. I think when we're spending in unnecessary areas, though, it's not helping our academics. And I do think when you're asking the public to pay more for what they see as they're not getting a lot of value out of currently, that's a really hard sell. So just, just giving a different perspective on that from my side, but I appreciate your viewpoint as well.
Yeah, also, you know, I'm in complete support of looking at that one-to-one Chromebook policy.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed budget. I already read that, so I can read it again. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, motion passes. The last motion?
I move we authorize a truth and taxation hearing to be held on August 6th.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to authorize a truth and taxation hearing to be held on August 6th. Any discussion to that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, and with that, we close our budget hearing. Thank you so much, gentlemen, appreciate it. All right, we are going to move back. We had an agenda item that we had to postpone. This is the Article 8A24 Electronic Devices and Acceptable Use of Technology. This is the second and final reading. I should say the proposed second and final reading.
Right.
Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, board members. Once again, this is Article 8A24 that is up for a second reading. This is our Electronic Device and Acceptable Use Technology Policy. We have discussed this policy at length in study sessions and in board meeting and in our committee meetings. So the policy itself, I, I hope at this point is well-known to the board members. There were just the minor changes that were, were suggested from last time that were added to the policy for the second reading. If you have any questions about the policy that you have before you, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions as it reads? Okay, we did have some people sign up to speak to this particular agenda item, so we're going to invite in this order Matt McPherson, Nicole McPherson, and Amy Winder-Newton to come up and take three to five minutes apiece to address the board and share with you, with us your thoughts.
Thank you, board, and Dr. Dai, for allowing me to come here and speak. It's good to be here. I do want to talk about this cell phone policy in particular, though my concern actually stems more to some of the language that's been in there to allow individual schools to make much more restrictive policies beyond what you already have proposed. And because of this, I, I just wanted to kind of back up a little bit and say there's a couple of things that I, I believe they're all here because we're interested in what's best for the students. And that's, that's what we're each trying to do and this particular policy I think has that in mind. And then this isn't about what's best for the teachers, this isn't what about what's best for the administrators or for school boards or for legislature or for, you know, the governor. This isn't about what's good or best for them, it's what's best for the students. And then the second thing I wanted to say too is that there's clearly a problem, obviously, and I want us to take a step back to be able to slow down and think for a moment. This is the best time to do it before policy is in place. Slow down and just realize that not everyone thinks that maybe this is clearly a problem that doesn't have as clear of a solution. So my primary concerns with this policy, at least as it pertains to some of the schools, in particular, I'm going to speak about Granger High School's proposed policy, that is in some ways perhaps being supported by this current policy, is that it might actually have some, some serious legal problems with it. And those primarily are 14th Amendment issues and I think that, as you understand that, you know, that even students, even our children, they have rights, they're inalienable rights and they can't be deprived of property without substantive due process. And courts have looked at this when school districts, LAs have gone through the process of making rules to restrict those items and they typically look at a couple of things. They look at, is it narrowly construed and is it necessary? And in this particular case, I just want to outline some of my concerns about those because most of these stem from a 2006 case in New York. There was a permanent cell phone ban that was proposed by the mayor and then it was implemented in most of the schools and it did take several court challenges and it was upheld. Now, 2006, any technology policy back then, as you can understand, is probably prehistoric from a technology perspective. Things have changed a lot since then, but I, I think it's important to point out, almost all the schools since then in 2015 in New York, even though that policy upheld, have been reversing those policies since that time. And so there's a couple of things. My primary concern comes to enforcement. Currently, cell phones are already not allowed in instruction time and schools and teachers have the ability to warn those students, they can send them to the office. If they're refusing to go to the office or refusing to listen, then you've got resource officers can assist. Schools themselves by statute have the ability to suspend, even expel students for repeatedly violating school policies and rules. You have these tools already at your command to kind of enforce cell phone policies that are pretty narrowly construed. They only affect those that are actually violating school policy. But with Granger High School's particular policy in, that they propose where they're going to lock the, the phones away into a pouch that the students will keep on their possession, they will be deprived access to that property till the end of the school day, it's got a lot of potential problems with that. That's a bell-to-bell issue and there is some real concerns about things like, you know, you have a requirement to provide accommodations to 504s, IEPs, people with ADA needs. You don't really have a process or a method to prevent outing those students when they have access, for example, to a phone between classes or at lunch because of those plans. You're required to keep those confidential as well and that exposes some risk to the district. There's also some issues when it comes to the necessary standard that applies to this law and I think that goes again to the enforcement that's currently being done. It's pretty hard to argue in court, if this were to face a court case, that, that this policy in particular with Granger High School was absolutely necessary when they're not enforcing the current policy. So there's some, there's some restrictions there, but the final point I really want to make here is more from a moral, constitutional, and legal standpoint as a parent. And that is, is that there is a realm in this state in particular and our state constitution where we have the right as parents to direct the learning and the education of our students. You have a mandate, obviously, in the schools to, to educate children. We understand that. I apologize if I'm, am I, am I three minutes or is that my five? That was my five? If I could just finish quickly, it's, thank you. Is that there, there is a degree to this where parenting comes involved and I understand that there's a problem here. And I support the issue of having a policy of not allowing phones during classroom learning time. That seems narrowly constricted, that's necessary, I believe, but preventing a parent like me who believes that we have a world where we have to live in harmony with technology and students need to learn that and we're not doing them any favors by restricting access to those phones and then putting them out in the real world where they're not going to have a job where that's going to be required. They're not going to socialize with their friends where they're, they have to lock their phones up. They have to learn to live in a world where technology is now part of our daily lives, much more so than it was in 2006. And I think this interferes with the parenting perspective when I personally would like my son to have his phone at 17, that he can be able to communicate, he can read his scriptures in between classes. These things are important to me and for him to learn how to manage that and I believe that the school might be interfering my, with my ability to, to make that, that parental right. So I appreciate your time and again, I, I, I hope the district will take a step back and look at their current policy, the one they have in place and remove any language that allowed the districts, the individual schools to make much more restrictive policies like in the case of Gran, of Granger High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative McPherson.
Hi, I would also like to speak about the Granger policy. I want to start off by saying that the FAQ page I was given about the policy states that 57% of parents are supportive. I find this very misleading. Most of the parents I talked to had no idea that that's what the survey was asking. We were under the impression that the survey was asking about the policy that's currently in place and the vast majority of parents I spoke to are not in support of this new policy. So I want you to know that 57% is very misleading. I also had occasion to speak with Utah State Representative Elyson, who helped create Safe UT, which we have been pushing very hard on our kids. And he said it is no secret that Safe UT is going to roll out push notifications through the app to every kid who has it in an emergency situation. That there was a student in the Columbine shooting that hid in a closet for over eight hours because she was afraid to come out. And when people yelled, "It's safe now, you can come out," she thought it was the shooter and hid more. And I'm sure that those extra hours of hiding have affected her and our kids don't deserve that. And I cannot imagine an active shooter situation at our high school where every kid has to get their Chromebook out while they're trying to hide to get to the Safe UT app. It was suggested by Dr. Howe to me that they could simply get some scissors and cut the pouch open. Do you know what the first thing to leave in a panic situation is? Fine motor skills. So let's say the kids can somehow get scissors and now you have kids who are shaking and don't have fine motor skills trying to cut open pouches in a group of tight other kids. This is a major safety issue. This is the highest occupancy school in our state and I believe the most likely for this to happen with that many kids. And if they do not have access to this app where they can be told when it is safe, that is unacceptable to put our kids at risk like that. And I'm asking you to take that under consideration. And I do believe that this crosses the line of where government needs to step in and where parents have the right. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent, great to be with you. My name is Amy Winder-Newton. I'm here as a parent in Granite School District, but also as a Salt Lake County Council member who has a good share of my district in your school district. And then also, I work for Governor Cox as the Director of the Office of Families and cell phones and social media and all of these things have been a, a big issue for us as we've worried a lot about our kids and the mental health challenges they're facing. Just wanted to applaud you for what you're doing. You guys are leading the way in a lot of cases with these policies. I think your, your policy is fantastic. I love that you're giving schools the ability to have a more stringent policy and I'm really excited to see how, how Granger implements this and we're just thrilled, we think this is the right thing. You know, it is important for kids to learn how to manage cell phones, but in schools, in places of learning, that is not the place to do that. We, you know, we value the tax dollars that are spent on educating our children and the fact that we don't want things distracting them from learning is really, really important. I would just maybe give a few suggestions as you look at this. We've, so I've been involved through my role with the state in looking at what other districts are doing around the state and other schools related to cell phone policies. And as far as, I know you'll have administrative rules that you'll be looking at, but what most of them are finding is a successful way to do this is to not give warnings, but just have the rule in place that if a child has the phone out, the first thing that happens is the, the teacher takes it and holds it till the end of class. And then the second time that something happens, the phone goes down to the office and the child can pick it up at the end of the school day. And then the third thing is the phone goes down to the office, but the parent has to pick it up. So that's what we've seen as far as what other schools and school districts are doing to, to enforce this. One thing I worry about with warnings is how are you going to keep track of which teacher is given a warning and, and all of that? I think you're just asking for more trouble as far as being able to implement, implement it. So I wanted to share that, but just wanted to let you know, I'm so excited, we're, the governor's really excited about both your policy but also Granger doing the Yonder packets. We're not worried, I'm not worried about the lawsuit piece. I think Yonder wouldn't be in business if this was going to violate rights of students and I'm really excited to see how this turns out. So thanks again.
Thanks, Amy. I, we were let know that we did have two other people that were desirous to talk about this. Amy Warren, you signed up on, just on the, the other sheet, so I apologize for the mix-up. And then also Laurie Stringham is here from the Salt Lake County Council as well as being a parent in Granite District. So we'll invite you guys up to come and take some time.
So as many of you know, I'm Amy Warren. I'm the Granger Council PTA President, so I interact with lots of parents throughout all of the Granger Council area. And as I've been discussing this policy with them and with others throughout the state in my work with other areas, I would just like to say thank you for establishing this policy. My kids are young, my oldest is going into fifth grade, they don't have cell phones yet. I'm not interested in that happening anytime soon, they, they are. But I really appreciate this being in place so that when they're at that point, I know that it will be enforced. Because as I've talked with my PTA friends at the high schools and the middle schools, they're like, oh, I, I wish the teachers could enforce the, the policy. I wish that it could, that, yeah, they tell them no cell phones, but they still end up with cell phones and they're still ending up on social media and they're still getting that during classroom time. And so I really appreciate the new policy with the bell-to-bell specifically for the younger grades and then in instruction time. And I also applaud Granger High School for the work that their community council did to work to decide what they were going to do as a community council and I think it's a great policy and I hope that it, it succeeds for all the schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Laurie?
Hello, Laurie Stringham. I'm actually the Chair of the Salt Lake County Council currently, parent of a student here in Granite School District right now and a former teacher for Granite School District. For those of you who don't know, I've actually taught elementary, junior high, and high school here in Granite School District, currently substitute teach from time to time. So I think one of the things that needs to be mentioned here is how difficult it is for a teacher to teach when you're dealing with students with devices and how difficult it is to enforce anything when it is not a policy that is enforced school-wide. I'll be honest, if this had come out maybe 10 years ago when we were talking about this, I probably would have been where other parents are saying, no, like, my child has a right to have their phone and things like that. We're in a different time now and I will tell you that the phones have become the biggest disruption to education that there could be out there, period. Most students spend most of their time more worried about who's saying what about them online than what they're learning in class at that moment. And I can't tell you how many times I've had students break down in my classroom because somebody just posted something about them in the middle of school, in the middle of class, from another classroom. And now I can't, I have to focus. And now I can't, I have to focus momentarily to deal with that while we're trying to teach instruction, while we're trying to deal with things. Having taught high school and taught technical theater in high school, I can tell you how dangerous the phones are in my school classroom, because we're working with power tools, we're working with students on projects, we're building around each other, and it is all supervised. But if they whip that phone out, they're not paying attention, and they put everybody at risk and in danger. In my classroom, I banned them, but that didn't always mean I couldn't enforce it. I'm so incredibly grateful as a teacher that this is a policy that you are considering at this time. I don't know that parents fully understand how dangerous phones are to their students in classes, in the classroom, and in schools. Because of the bullying and things that are being used, this has become a tool for that. I'm also going to say that, yes, it could be a tool in a very serious moment if something the worst could happen, but that is the rarity. What's really happening is we're disrupting all educational pursuits by having these phones in the classroom. And I have not seen where it has been effective in teaching where they couldn't use their Chromebook and get the same effect out of having a device there. Ultimately, with my own child, he knows he's not allowed to have it in the classroom, and I know that he does, because I can see it as a parent. So most of my students, over the time that I have been a teacher, in the time that social media and the devices have been available, they have been a harbinger of problems constantly in classrooms. And we've never had the tools to be able to deal with them, and I'm grateful that you are looking at that as being a tool to deal with those now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Board, you've heard comments, as well as we've had the policy presented. Is there either a motion or further discussion about this or questions?
Karen's about to speak.
I was announcing you, Karen.
I was just going to do the proper procedure and get a motion on the table before the discussion, if I could.
Yep, please do.
Okay, I don't have the number in front of me. What number is the policy? Thank you. I move that we accept Article 8A24, Electronic Devices in Acceptable Use of Technology Policy as a second and final reading.
All seconded up. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Article 8A24, Electronic Devices in Acceptable Use of Technology as a second and final reading. And now if there's discussion, let's go ahead with that.
Yeah, I have a comment, if you don't mind. Thank you. So I think from the beginning, I made it pretty clear to all of you and to anyone who's listened to any of our prior meetings that I would support this policy with appropriate exceptions, right? Unfortunately, sorry, that's my chair, not me. Unfortunately, I think a couple of things. So we sent this policy out to the public, and we got feedback on it. Since that time, we've changed the policy to not allow watches to even be worn. And I don't know that that's, you know, people did not get an opportunity to opine on that, in my opinion. Also, with the way we see it being implemented with the Granger policy, the exceptions that we have, as I've said before, are basically null and void. And so unless we're going to take action to actually allow those exceptions, I cannot support this policy at this point, which is unfortunate. I feel like right from the beginning, like I said, I was willing to support it. I thought we were on a good track. But the path that it's taken just brings concerns that I'm not comfortable with. So I mean, I would suggest a substitute motion that we approve the policy with removing, as long as we're removing, the removal, right? Undo the removal of not allowing watches to be worn, as well as that the exceptions have to be viable. Like, I mean, we had this discussion before, but with the yonder pouches, the exceptions are not practical.
Is that an official motion?
Yes.
Right, so we have a motion to, a substitute motion to approve the policy with the original language.
Original language around smartwatches being allowed to be worn.
Smartwatches, as well as the restrictions of the more strict, is that correct?
Well, as well as with an assurance that exceptions have to be followed, and that any local policies that don't allow that are not allowed.
How do you feel that is not addressed currently as far as the restrictions, the exceptions?
Well, it is written, but it's not being followed, right? So that's my concern. The exceptions which say that a student should, they have the ability to pull their phone out and use it in a case of an exigent circumstance, or a personal medical need, or, you know, whatever that emergency is to the child, is not doable when it's locked in a pouch.
I would suggest, though, that's incumbent on Granger High School to prove that they are following our policy. Just because we put that in our policy, that is not something of fault in our policy, but that is something that is incumbent on each school to follow.
Right, and I get what you're saying there, but we approve the policy, and, you know, that policy stays in place, then our policy is not worth the paper that it's on. And so that's my concern.
Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to ask for a second for Kim's motion. All right, seeing no second, we will go back to the original motion, which is to approve this policy as a second and final reading.
I have a follow-up question on behalf of some teachers that have reached out to me in regards to, at a high level, how this is different than previous policy. There's been some discussion this evening about the previous policy not being enforced. My hope personally is that this does give teachers more of an ability to enforce the policy, but Dr. Nye, maybe you can address how that's going to be achieved from an administrative standpoint, and how the district plans to enforce the policy so that the teachers indeed feel empowered to enforce it themselves, versus this issue of, well, you know, my kids come home and they say, "Well, this teacher enforces it, but this other teacher does not." And so there's not a consistent application or enforcement of the policy. Please.
Sure. This policy, Madam President, this policy creates a framework by which there's a defined expectation. To the point, though, our previous policy essentially said, "Schools adopt an electronic acceptable use policy." And the concern is enforcement. And so given this framework, it would be revisited with administrators that as they're laying the, or operating their device expectations within this framework that they are adhered to, and consistency is key. So I'd imagine over time, where there are issues of one teacher allowing one student or their class to use them maybe outside of the policy, and the next one does, anytime that becomes aware, then of course, we would work with the school administration on the enforcement behind that. So there is an expectation of a reporting feature with any of the board's policies that when it's reported to us that it's not being followed, that we take appropriate action. And that's the, I would say, within this framework, a position the Granite School District is taking, that district-wide, there is an expectation of consistency of implementation, wherein in times past, it really was left at the school level to determine whether or not, because it was their, it was their procedure, if you will, as to what it was. So board having a policy, the expectation is that schools operate within this framework. And when they don't, or a teacher doesn't, or administrator doesn't, then a different course of action is pursued in terms of follow-up and re-leveling expectations.
I appreciate that question, Clark. Oh, sorry, Julie, do you want to go first?
Go ahead, Karen. I'll come after you.
Okay. I didn't hear you. I think the biggest piece of this is that it is a district-wide policy, and we're getting everybody on the same page. As I went around to schools and community councils, I spoke with a lot of teachers, I spoke with dozens of parents, and not all parents are against this. There are a lot that I talked to are, quite frankly, begging and asking for us to do things. And so I think it's important to remember that there are people, that parents, that are asking for this. But what really stood out to me is the fact that our teachers want a district-wide policy because it gives them something to kind of fall back on. I've spoken earlier on, teachers only have so much political capital in their classroom, and they have to decide, how am I going to use that? Am I going to use that to engage my students and have a meaningful lesson where they learn and grow and are paying attention? Or am I going to use my little bit of political capital to take their cellphone away and have them mad at me and tuned out for the rest of the classroom, right? So it was, it's time and time again, the teachers were asking for a district-wide policies for them to fall back on, and really for us to back them up. And I'm willing to back them up. I'm going to support this policy. It's interesting, I, you know, I have three junior highs and a high school in my precinct, and almost all the parents that we talked to, and we've had rigorous discussions, thorough discussions in each of these community councils, especially Granger High, with them going a little bit further and doing a bell-to-bell with these yonder pouches. And while maybe not unanimous, there is overwhelming support. Dr. Howe shared with us that, you know, in, oh, gosh, I forget how many teachers you have, Tyler?
140.
140 teachers. 92%, 92 came in consensus in favor of a very stringent cellphone policy, which means, to your point, Clark, that 92% of them already have buy-in. That means that 8% left need to buy in, and they will. And so that we have this complete, you know, backing up of our district-wide policy. So I'm quite proud of Granger for leading out on this. Are there going to be bumps along the way? Sure. But that's new with everything when you try it the first time, right? So do we just not try something new because it might be rocky? Or do we have the courage to actually take that first scary leap forward? And that's where I'm really proud of Granger for doing that. But that's specific to Granger's policy, but I don't want that to get lost, that this policy covers much more. It's all schools. And I know my three junior highs are excited for this, for them to have some backup from the district too. So I've spoken enough, but I'm just going to be voting to support this policy.
Thanks, Karen. Julie, go ahead.
Thank you. In C3 of this policy, it refers to limitations are put on personal electronic devices. And then up above in the definitions portion, let's see, B4, personal electronic device is defined as devices used for audio, video, and or text communication, or any other type of computer or computer-like instrument that is not owned or issued by the district to the student. And this is the first moment where I realized that, you know, I focused so much on, like, cell phones and watches and are these things okay, that I didn't realize that this is saying that we are not going to allow students to use personal computers in the classroom. I just want to make sure that that is what was intended, because I don't think we really have that discussion, and I think that's a really big discussion, unless that discussion had been had when I was not in the room necessarily. I'm not sure that I'm in favor of that.
Julie, this is Clark. Can you elaborate, please? And I guess I'll give some color around my request, but I see your point in terms of understanding definitionally what we're doing here in terms of the policy. But when I think of a personal computer, I think of the same distractions that are available by way of a smaller cellular device or smartphone. So with Chromebooks, we have certain filters, we have certain controls, we have certain oversight that's available to parents by way of the Bark functionality, which is not available by way of a personal computer. So can you elaborate more on why you're concerned about restricting personal computers?
Yeah, Clark, it comes back to my desire to study our strategy about Chromebooks in general after this, you know, policy. And that is because, you know, parents are asked to take home a Chromebook, which they cannot control, and have that in their home. And some parents are saying the way that they're going to handle that is to not use their Chromebook and get their own laptop for their children, or have them not use their Chromebook at all. And I mean, I guess, I wouldn't say that I think any parent can just, that I might count on it, but a parent can just have their own laptop. But it's kind of an out for a parent who's like, you know, I don't want my kid on that Chromebook. I don't trust that the district has what I want on it. It feels like it pulls control from the parent. And so to me, it's not that I really know that or think that, but I haven't studied it to know it. And so I still am very concerned about the Chromebooks, and I think for me, being able to use a laptop that the parent controls instead of the Chromebook was kind of a, you know, a source of, you know, peace for me, that those parents at least had some option, even if it was an expensive one. And by the way, I don't think that's the solution and what we ought to go for. I just, just this moment of realizing that that is not a part of this plan, that that pulls that out, makes me nervous, and I haven't thought that through very hard.
Julie, I would suggest that the administrative procedure, Administrative Memo 130, it does suggest that there are exceptions that can be made. I just asked Dr. Nye about it, what exceptions there might be. There might be a special keyboard for somebody who needs it, or certain electronic devices like that. And I think that would be covered under the exceptions that we listed in 130. Beyond that, I think, I think the board as a whole, from what I've heard, we are interested in talking about Chromebooks and their usage, period, and is something that we can visit at a different time. Does that help dispel your concern with that particular part, or is there something else that you would be interested in adding to that?
I guess I wish I could just realize this earlier so I could think about, you know, I'm not have, you know, 10 minutes to think about this one issue. But especially knowing that we are going to, if we are going to readdress this, then I will feel confident to support this. One of the things that I wanted to bring up with my vote is that I would like for, I don't know if I can make an amendment for something, or how we can make this official, but I would like to see this something that we look at again in a year and see how it's going. And I think that with these electronic devices, any of this technology, we really, it's changing so quickly that we absolutely need to look at it more often than our other policies. And so I wanted to, I'm not sure how to officially propose that we look at this again in a year instead of keeping it on the same calendar as other policies, but I would like to propose that.
You can do that in talking to board leadership.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Connie, did you have something to?
I'm going to support this. After visiting a junior high, of course, that has After visiting a junior high, of course, that has had this for a couple of years, where there have no cellphones, to see the young people during lunch, how well they associated with each other, they absolutely sat at the table, and there were tons of kids just talking. And, you know, a good portion of kids were outside playing basketball, or some other sports, outside during lunchtime. And I just feel like, if we can give, they're in a group, if we can help facilitate rather than this kids feeling like they have to have something in their hand, but allowing them that time to talk and, and associate, I think mentally, that may be a big help for them. But for, one of the reasons why I'll vote for that is that a lot.
Thanks, Connie.
Just one final comment, thank you. I just, I want to say, I, to be clear, like, I agree we need to do something, and cellphones are a distraction, I just feel like we're going too far. And in the practical example where it's playing out, the exceptions are nullified. Also, I agree with Representative McPherson's comments, I think very well stated and thought out. Yonder has faced no legal challenges, yet it's too new a product, and perhaps that will be coming down the road. Just want to leave you with those thoughts, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Just for my part, I actually appreciate Representative McPherson, his, his thoughts, as far as he said, we're all here for the kids, right? This is, this is what we're here for. We're here to, to educate our students, to educate these, these kids. And most of us up here have kids that are in school and that, that fall in this category. You know, we, we also want to be able to have the teachers teach, and, and removing those distractions, it's a, it's a constant battle. Laurie spoke to that, as far as how hard it is to police that, speaking to the policy. I think it makes a huge difference, I've seen it play out at some of the junior highs that are in my area, that it becomes, it's, it's not a battle, after a while. And they've been able to teach, they've been able to see marked improvement in academics, and after all, that's what we're here for, is to focus on our student learning. And, you know, a lot of parents, at least the ones that I've, I've spoken to in community council meetings, and even parents of my own students, that have expressed that, you know, they shouldn't be doing this during, during school, they, please, please do something that, that helps them understand how important this is. I think, you know, we're, we're trying to do what's right by our kids, what's right by, by these students, to make sure that we are focused on learning. And so, for that reason, I will be supporting this policy as well.
I forgot, I wanted to say one thing. I, again, want to reiterate, I think it's really important that we have a bit of a marketing plan surrounding this, that we help people, make sure people understand that it's happening, that they're not surprised and shocked, that they understand why we're doing so. And, you know, I would love it too, if there was some sort of connection to, we're going to take the phone out of the hand and put a book in it. And, you know, when, when you're, you know, when you talk to our teachers about how to handle this, you tell them, yeah, when your student is finished with all their work, they get out their reading book, and they have a reading book that's like in print and on paper, and they read that book. And, you know, if, if we can, I, I just wanted to encourage our administration in, you know, in the implementation of this policy, you're really connected to books, because I think that's, removing this is really, we don't put in here, but what we're really hoping is that, in removing the phone, we gain knowledge, and we need to make sure we're focusing on the gain that we're hoping to achieve from the removal.
Go ahead, Karen.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Connie, for bringing up the social impacts. I totally forgot that in my comment, and that is a real thing, and I'm excited to kind of see the impact that this has. The junior highs in my area that have done this, they've made the same comments, Connie, of, you see lunchtime, and you see kids actually disengage, you know, their phones are away, and they're going eye-to-eye, and, you know, just managing to get through their day, actually having conversations, and knowing how to look people in the eye, and how are your classes going, and, and things like that. Such a social benefit, because when we're buried in our screens, our kids aren't learning those skills. And, you know, we're all guilty of being buried in our screen at times. So, that's one aspect I'm excited to keep looking at. Another thing is, obviously, it's been mentioned, there's a lot of, this little tiny device in our hands is the biggest distraction out there, and detrimental to learning. I know particularly Granger Highs come up, we have looked at Granger's data, and we have, we've tried to pull it apart, right, Dr. Howe, and say, why are, you know, these numbers are not our proficiency rates, and our growth scores, and, and there's good things happening, but they're happening very slowly. And so, we talk about, you know, what can we do to, to raise these, and we have parents asking us this too, what can we do as a, as a district to, to help learning, especially at Granger High, which is one of our low, low graduation rates, and, and has some lower scores? And I am just really excited to kind of see, once you take that distraction away, how much academics improve. So hopefully, this is kind of, you know, we're backing up the teachers, of course, hopefully, these academic scores are, you know, going to take off, and, and we see some real learning. And I'm sorry, but when you take away the distraction, learning should happen. And then also, kind of be, this social benefit of it too. So, I'm just, I've already stated I'm voting for the policy, but I just wanted to make that on the record, that I see a huge academic benefit to this, as well as a social benefit. And, and not to forget, help to our administrators and teachers as well.
Thanks, Karen. Any further comments, questions? All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Article 8A24 Electronic Device and Acceptable Use Technology as the second and final reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Of course, when I wait, I can't hear. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right.
I would say aye, and I'm cool.
Okay. You just anticipated it. All right. Thank you so much. It was a good discussion, and, and we look forward to how this is, to seeing how this happens this, this year.
Thank you, board members.
Superintendent Nye, for, to go ahead and do a superintendent report.
Thanks, Board President. Just wanted to bring a few things to attention, given the last discussion that we just had. The policy incorporates by reference Administrative Memo 130. So if you think of the board policy as being the framework, or what the expectation is, the Administrative Memo speaks to procedure at the school level, and captures the intent of the policy. And since you've incorporated it by reference in this policy, I'll be, as we're getting feedback and working on any of those revisions, I will keep the board abreast of that. And so you have an opportunity to view it, to make sure that we have captured that intent that you've set forth in that framework, per that cellphone policy. Speaking of high schools, I just wanted a, a couple things, as was noted in the celebrations. In each of the graduation reviews, I hope you notice that there's been an increase, generally, in graduation, in each of the graduation reviews. We're compiling these data, and we'll be able to share with the board in the very near future, what should be another increase in the graduation rate for the Granite School District. Now, as we know, students have until September 30th to complete graduation requirements, and the state board applies the accountability rules in the graduation, they, they do their data audits. And so we don't, won't necessarily be able to publish graduation rates throughout the district until late fall, early winter. But we will, as far as the district, I will share with you what our preliminary data say regarding graduation rates, and right now, it does show an increase. As per our strategic priorities, graduation rate is an increase, proficiency as well. And some of those priorities are, we've, we're also seeing an increase across our high schools, in the number of students that are participating and having success in advanced coursework, again, CTE, AP, IB, concurrent enrollment, and so on. So we will, as soon as we work through the, the data process and the auditing process, we can share some preliminary numbers around that, and I'll, I'll share that with the board members, recognizing that the state board will take much longer in releasing the final numbers for our district and for the state, including rise proficiencies. So, more to come on that. I also want to thank the board. Part of the consent calendar was some negotiation settlements, and appreciate Todd and his team, and all the departments, really, for scrubbing budgets. The, the process of budget harvesting, as much fun as it sounds, is, is quite a laborious task when you're identifying how dollars are being spent, and the precious dollars that we have. And so through that process, appreciate Todd, you and your group, working with our different associations, to identify what our budgets are, what is in with our capacity to do, and to be able to do so, come to a position within our budget where we're not going to the taxpayers for operations, recognizing that there's still much, much more work to be done in that regard. We look forward on working on those student-based budgeting practices. And with that, Madam President, concludes my report.
Thanks, Dr. Nye. Kim, why don't we start with you?
I do not have any update.
I just want to mention the County Rec Pass again, if people are listening. Parents can go to any rec center and sign up their children from five to eighteen. They are trying to, or they may go down to three, four, but right now, it's just age five. In our Parks and Rec meeting, we're, we'll be getting a new director, and so, they're taking us through all of the different parts of the Parks and Rec Division, which is very interesting. But also, I, what else do we have? Oh, Evergreen Junior High, I was impressed to go watch the kids in their summer program with, I can't remember what it's called, with their, I don't know if it's a Lego League, but their cars. And it was so fun to watch how excited they got at this one-minute competition with four different mechanical things that they learned to put together. So all of them looked different, but it was very interesting.
Thanks, Connie. Karen?
I have nothing to report.
Wow. I am going to give a short report on, on two committee assignments that I have. The first is the Budget Committee, and I just want to make this group aware that the Budget Committee is already working on exactly what we talked about tonight, which is analyzing programs that are funded by monies that are anticipated to be either limited or completely eliminated in years to kind of, either the immediately coming year, or, or in the very near future beyond. And, and actively working with Todd and his team, and obviously appreciate their efforts in this regard, but with an effort specifically to, to look at and analyze as much quantitative data as we can in relation to those programs, so that we can bring that information to the board and make educated decisions, as these budget discussions and decisions and agonizing trade-offs are going to be made more and more, I think we anticipate, in the very near coming future. And then lastly, with respect to the Audit Committee, the schools have been going through their annual audits, some of them by our external auditor, and, and the vast majority of the rest of our schools by our internal auditor, and those reports are being finalized by the end of our fiscal year. So, just from an oversight standpoint, I think that's an important acknowledgement to make, that each of our schools are regularly being overseen and audited from a fiscal standpoint, which is obviously something near and dear to my heart, anyway. Thanks, that's all I have.
Julie, do you have anything to report?
Yes, since I represent us on the USBA, I just wanted to report that the USBA have a delegate assembly. I am the chairperson of the Legislative Committee, which ran that, and so, we have a lot to do with that. And I'm really thrilled to say that we passed some priorities for next year, which we've done earlier than usual, so we can get them out to our legislators as they create their legislation, you know, their bills this summer. We also voted on, we had a revote about the, our support of the amendment to get rid of the DTRMR, and that came to basically a no vote. So there was no conclusion on that, and our old position, conditional support stands there. I just wanted to make the board aware of another thing that we are going to be doing, because it's something that I'm in charge of, and that is that in an effort to help our legislators understand what goes on in our schools, we will be creating a day, a statewide day called Day in the Classroom, where we have Day on the Hill, where school board members go to the Hill. This is Day in the Classroom, where legislators go in the classroom. So we're going to try to get every legislator into the classroom in September, and we have a week there, we're working together, we need a superintendent to approve our plan before we announce it officially. But anyway, I just wanted to let you guys know about that, because, again, I'm in charge of that, so it's going to come and take a look. Anyway, thanks.
Great, thanks. As far as my committee is, you guys have, I gave you the update on law and policy in the email, and our district community council is not meeting, so those are the ones that I sit on. I do want to remind you, though, of our board retreat coming up next week, on Friday. Looking forward to that. We are going to start, just so you know, at the new Granite Education Foundation. We're going to take a tour and do a little bit of service there for them. So, if you can plan on that at nine o'clock, we will meet you there bright and early. And please look for, I will send out our, our board, I apologize, I didn't get that out this weekend, but our board self-evaluation, I'd like to have that data before we get there, so that we can talk about that, and make some goals around that. So, with that, that concludes mine. Karen is ready.
Move to adjourn.
It's the fastest motion, a second with that all night, just want to point that out. Thanks. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.